Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham? Cheetham?
Here.
Here.
Marshan?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Vlad?
Here. Thank you. Before we move any further, I need to excuse our other two council members. They had, one had, I think, an emergency and the other was kind of emergency. It was supposed to happen next week and he got some tickets and found out the next morning he was flying out. And so, he's like, I don't know what to do. So, just want to excuse the two of them for tonight. With that, we'll go ahead. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which, if you remain standing for the invocation, which will be offered by Carl Pettit, representing the First Baptist Church? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you pray with me? Father God, we are so grateful to be able to be in this place today. The freedoms we get to enjoy, we thank you for those. And today, we ask God that you would be in this room as our leaders look to the future and plan and take care of the daily details, the weekly details, et cetera. Father, we pray for wisdom and discernment. We pray for a good spirit of participation and work through this. And God, we lift up a special prayer to our city council members and our mayor, that you would protect them and guide them and give them the discernment and wisdom they need. Father, come with their families as well, as they get to spend time with them. We thank you again for this opportunity, in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Carl. We'll move on to agenda item number three, is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings. Work session meetings, July 14, August 11, and September 9, 2022. Budget development meeting of July 21, 2022. And clarification and regular city council meetings of November 17, December 1, December 5, 2022, and January 5, 2023. B. Material claims. Council may wish to ratify the material claims for the period of January 1 through 15, 2023, and consider the material claims for the period of January 16 through 31, 2023. C. Treasurer's report. Council may wish to consider the treasurer's report for November 2022, showing cash and investments as of November 30, 2022. D. Historic preservation committee, Historic Preservation Commission appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Ellen Ryan to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, replacing Cindy Peterson, who resigned. Ellen's term will begin February 3, 2023, and will expire October 8, 2024. Yes, Councilmember Nichols.
I move to approve agenda item number three, the consent agenda, as listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Cheetham? Cheetham?
Yes.
Marshan?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four, proclamation and communications, we have none. So, agenda item five is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On February 9, 9:00 a.m., city council work session. February 13, 10:00 a.m., special city council meeting. February 16, 5:30 p.m., council clarification meeting. 6:00 p.m., regular city council meeting. Other events, half-price pet adoptions have been extended through Saturday, February 4. For more information, please contact Pocatello Animal Shelter. Forty-third annual Simplot Games will be held February 16, 17, and 18, 2023, at the Idaho State University's Holt Arena. City offices will be closed on February 20th to observe Presidents' Day. However, garbage and recycle pickups will remain on schedule. Applications for the Pocatello's Promise of Tomorrow Mayoral Scholarship for Students' Programs are being accepted through February 28. And as a reminder, please keep sidewalks clear of snow and ice. Do not place snow in the streets. It becomes a driving hazard. We'll move on to agenda item six. Daycare license revocation appeal, Victory Kids Daycare. Jessie Redd, owner-operator of Victory Kids Daycare, will be present to appeal the revocation of her city daycare business license. Before we get any further, we did receive a letter from her. It has been reviewed and it will be, and is part of the record as well. And so, just want to clear that up if anybody's questioning that. So, with that, Tori.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name's Tori Eldridge. I'm the licensing officer for the city of Pocatello, and I'm here because of the revocation of the Victory Kids Daycare license. I know, if you have questions for me at this time, or if you'd like to address Jessie Redd, or... The reason for the revocation was based off of a denial of the state health inspection, failure to, there was multiple violations on the inspection. And this has been a, this has been the occasion on the last several inspections that we've done. There's been city code violations that haven't been corrected. And the cleanliness of the house isn't a safe and healthy environment for the kids. And I did print off some pictures if you guys need those.
Yes, we've got a question here. Why don't you hand those to me and I'll hand them all out.
I just wanted to ask if you could give us just sort of a quick timeline. The statement that we received, to me, was a little bit confusing in exactly what happened when. But it seems like there's ongoing issues. Can you give us sort of a brief overview?
Yeah, so, we've gone, I've gone out there several times to do unannounced inspections. And every time I've been out there, there's been multiple violations. And in December, myself and Michelle Ossler with the Health Department went out and did an unannounced inspection. And there were, again, multiple violations and on our city codes and the Health Department codes. So, she doesn't meet the qualifications to continue to have a daycare license in her home. And we've addressed this several times with her and the, it just wasn't, it's never, it's never improving. The residence is, no improvement. And so, that was on the 13th of December. I emailed everything to the city attorney and then in January, we went out and revoked her license.
And just to clarify, you said there's violations both of city code and state
Yes.
health and welfare standards?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions, Mayor? Councilmember Nichols?
So, in the statement, the letter that we received from Jessie Redd, it sort of summarized and it says that, "All of this because I had dirty dishes in the sink and a stain on my carpet." Is there, could you explain there more to it than that?
Yes, there was more to that.
And what is there?
There, so there was, have been an issue with the carpet for a while. And I understand that they're renting, but it continues to get worse. And these kids are crawling on the carpet. And, and it's soiled and dirty. And so, we've addressed it. Michelle Ossler with the Health Department advised her she needed to get them professionally steam cleaned. But every time we go out there, the carpet seemed to be worse. And I, I understand, like, with the weather, but they're still pretty dirty. The bathrooms were dirty. There's a changing pad with mold and a hole in it. And that's been there for a while. There was knives left out on the counter. There was garbage in, in the pictures, you can see the garbage in the kitchen that was stacked up on a chair. And it's continual. Every time we go out there, there's an issue. So, there were, and there was immunization records. I have, this is the list from the Health Department of all of her violations from that day of the inspection. So, there was, there was, there were the dirty carpets. And there were dirty dishes, but there were other issues going on.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I do, Tori. I have a couple. This has been an ongoing problem, apparently. That's what brought you back, correct?
Yes.
How many ordinance violations total were there on this, on this call?
Fifteen.
Okay. So, there's, in the past, there have been other ordinance violations that have not ended up being in, ending with them losing their license, correct?
Right.
So, you have explained those violations to them and said, "These are the things that you need to correct to continue business within the city and keep your license." Is that correct?
Yes.
So, they understood that?
Yes, they're aware of that.
Okay.
And she was aware of possibly losing her license. And the day that we went back to revoke the license, there were still things that had not been cleaned.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other, Tori just made, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Jessie, are you here?
Jessie Redd with Victory Kids Daycare.
How are you? Go ahead and do, you want to just explain suffered? You want to just answer questions?
So, the violations that were, she said there were fifteen. There's, some of these were not actually violations. That was just a miscommunication, like the CPR card and all. Everyone was licensed and CPR certified. And then usually when they do an inspection, they say, okay, these are the violations. And then they were all corrected the next day. And usually, that's how it really is with all of the daycares. They come in and they, they tell you what they need done. And then you have, they give you a list and then you correct them and then they pass you. The issue with the carpet is, there is a stain on the carpet, but that's not because it's dirty. It's because it's a stain. And we actually have been shampooing the carpets every three months. And so, we asked her if three months is not enough. How often do you want us to do it? And she, and we said we'd do it weekly, if you wanted it weekly. But it's not because the carpets are dirty. They are clean. We've been shampooing it every three months. And that wasn't enough. So, we said, okay, we'll do it more often. But we weren't given a chance. The other issue was the dishes. And so, they arrive at 1:00, usually every time, right after lunch. We put the kids to bed. And then we take the time while they're sleeping to clean the kitchen. A lot of times, there's accumulation from breakfast to lunch of dishes that will accumulate before we put them in the dishwasher, or before we clean the kitchen. But when she came, there were five dishes in the sink. The kitchen was clean. The floors were clean and mopped. The sink, the stove was clean. I'm not sure why she said everything was dirty. Because it wasn't. We've cleaned the carpets. We've cleaned the house. We've tried our best. And there are a few things that we forgot, like, we forgot to have the fire extinguisher checked yearly. The next, that day, we went down and it was done. Immunizations, there are the parents, they got them into me that next day. So, those were all corrected the day after she came, on December 13. And I really don't understand why she is so adamant about that stain on the carpet being dirty and the kids crawling all over it. Well, it's a stain. It's not that it's dirty. Somebody, I don't know who the previous renters were, but it, it just, it looks clean about for two days, and then it appears. And it's there, regardless of what I do. So, that's about what I have to say. If you have any questions.
Council questions? Councilwoman Lyric?
And we just heard from Tori Eldridge that there were fifteen violations, that it isn't just about the carpet stain and the dishes.
So, she, she said that it was repeat violations. The dishes and the carpet are the repeat violations. All of these were new violations from years, I mean, from every year. They're just new. As we missed this year. We, they were, they were okay last year, but the, the repeat violation is the carpet and the dishes that they keep on me about. And I keep explaining, I'm sorry, the carpet looks bad, but it's clean. I'm sorry, there's dishes in the sink, but I'm not sure what time of the day. There's supposed to be no dishes. There's really not anything that says, there should never be a dish in the sink. I mean, how do you, how do you have lunch and not have dishes? And then, you know, put the kids to bed and then, you know, have enough time to, I mean, there isn't anything that says that they have to be done by a certain time of the day, or there should never be a dirty dish in the sink. There's nothing that says that. Those are the two repeat violations that
Okay.
that, that are the issue here. These, all these others are just random things that we missed.
Okay. But we're hearing that it's about more than just those two things. So, that's my concern, is that there's other things going on. The photos that we're looking at appear to show a lot more than those two things. So, I was wondering if you want to...
I'm not sure what photos she has. I haven't seen these. I don't know what she's showing you. I don't understand what, what's wrong with this room. And that's just a trash can with a pair of shoes. It's not, it's not dirty. The bathroom was not dirty. And the carpet, I'm not sure what the, what's the point here? The, the changing pad has a ribbon on the side there. The toy room, that's the toy room. It's got toys in it. The mats in the toy room are, they're, I'm sorry, I print them off in color, but they're just dirty. Remember that mats? I, I had them, I had them, what is it called? Pressure washed. Just before, like, winter, when it, just before it snowed, I had them all pressure washed. And a lot of them still looked that way. There's just, and we wipe them down. It's just, they're, they're not dirty. The place is not a hazard to children, is what I'm trying to say. And that's the sleeping area. That was it, sleeping children. And that's the table. I'm not sure why she's saying these are dirty. So, those, that's the dishes that we hadn't put away, and the few that were in the sink. Dust. And these were the things that were corrected, like the shaving, the razor. We corrected that. The toilet is clean. There's a stain around, that stain around there has been there for, since I've lived there. I've scrubbed on it. Michelle Ossler suggested I use a, a magic eraser, and that didn't work. So, it just doesn't come off. So, that is the stain on the floor. That's the one that appears every two days after we shampoo it. It just, I can't get rid of it. So, that's my explanation. I, most of these pictures are just the living, daycare living. They're not, it's not dirty and they are not in hazard. So, when she showed up to revoke the license and she brought two policemen and said she wasn't leaving till all the kids were gone, except for my grandkids, I guess it's okay for my grandkids to be in a dirty place, but not daycare. I felt like that was, that wasn't fair to make it feel, make it seem like those kids were in imminent danger. They are not in danger at all. And I could get statements from every one of my parents. But I just feel like the way it was handled was very intimidating and unprofessional. Sorry.
That's okay.
Maybe they're much tighter than I am, but I also have a daycare and I, during the day, we mess up the house. But it's clean every night. And they never come at night when it's clean. Any other questions?
Is that the stain?
Yes, those are the stains that are in question. And I'm, I'm sorry, that is what it looks like. And I've scrubbed, I've got down on my hands and knees and scrubbed those. And I've used, I even bought a professional back shampooer, the big kind that the professionals use. That's what I've been using to clean my floors for the past year, every three months. And it still won't do anything for that. It's just the way it is.
So, in your statement, towards the very end, you say, "Even if I win my appeal, my daycare will not be able to return."
I, I've lost all my daycare kids. I've lost the grant. I've lost $6,000 a month worth of income. I'm ruined because of this.
But if you're, let's say your license were upheld. Do you plan on staying in daycare and reopening right back?
I don't know. Is she going to allow that carpet to be the way it is? Because I can't do anything more about the carpet. I still have dishes during the day. I don't know what to do.
That's all you had?
I got a few. So, there's more than just the carpet. And there's more than just the dishes, right? So, when you, when you got, how long have you been in the daycare business?
Twenty-five years.
So, in that 25 years, you kind of understand the rules, I would think, correct?
Well, yeah. But...
So, I'm, I'm just, it's just questions. I'm not accusing you of any. Twenty-five years. So, we have a problem with the fire extinguishers. To me, that's a big problem. Is that something you do every year?
Yes. So, every year, since I've lived in Idaho for 10 years, it's been recertified every December. When I moved into the, this new location into Pocatello, two years ago, somehow these recertification got changed to March or April or something. And so, I, I missed that certification, thinking it was supposed to be in December. And I still had time to do that, but it had been the previous March or May or something like that.
But you don't, you don't rely on, you shouldn't rely on
It's not the only fire extinguisher.
An inspection to fix your business every year, correct? I mean, there, hopefully, I mean, I would think that you would want them to walk in and say, "Everything's good", or "You have this one problem. Get that corrected."
Every year.
And you get it corrected.
Every year. If you look back on, and they're listed on the Idaho Stars webpage, several daycares and all of their inspections every year. Out of the, how many that are there, I've, I've checked, maybe only two of them ever passed the first time around. They've all had problems. Immunizations weren't up to date. There was a gate that was missing and our cords that were hanging. And, and I've been through every single one of them. And every daycare has some issue. And sometimes they're different every year. That's, for 10 years, that's been going on. And I haven't, there hasn't been this issue until the carpets. And so, that's what I'm, I, I've been trying to correct the carpets every year. And it just isn't...
So, the only way to fix that carpet is to change it, correct?
Yeah.
So, why didn't you change it?
Because it's a rental.
Because what?
It's a rental.
But you run a business in that rental, correct?
It's a clean, it's still clean, even though there's a stain. The carpet has been cleaned I don't know how many times.
Okay.
And so, we also did some research and we said, okay, which we didn't get a chance to do before she revoked the license. I said, in here on the, on this, it said, "We discovered that there's a, that you can buy this adhesive plastic that's about this wide, that's for carpets." But because any other kind of stuff is too thick and the doors won't open. So, but this is really sheer, thin carpet, or I mean, plastic to cover the carpet that adheres, it's adhesive and it sticks to the carpet. And we said, we went out and we bought it. We were going to put that on the carpet to fix that. But we didn't get the chance to. So, I mean, I'm trying. I mean, I've bought a shampooer. Now, I've bought the, this stuff, but that's never going to be fixed, I guess.
Any other questions? Jessie, I just, I just, I'm, I think we're focusing on, on the city of Pocatello. And Tori, I have a concern with the Health Department, time and time again, not passing a Health Department inspection. That's, that's a concern that I have.
Well, then, you should be concerned about every single daycare in the city. Because, like I said, every single one of them, every time they're inspected, has a list of the things that they violated.
Sure.
And we get a chance to fix them. And then, and that happens with every daycare. So, this really wasn't out of the ordinary, other than some of these things that they, they argued with me and yelled at me about.
So, so I understand that. And believe me, I am concerned with every daycare out there. I, I am concerned for the youth and for the, the kids. And, and so, I am concerned about all of them. And when, when you hear a healthcare or health violation from the Health Department, regardless of where it is, that's going to be a red flag for me and, and a concern I have. I, I understand what you're saying here. I, I, a little concerned because the same violations happen over and over again. And I'm not talking carpet. I'm talking...
No, these violations aren't happening over and over. The carpet and the dishes were the ones that were happening over and over. These are all just, those pictures are just daily daycare kids playing and toys out.
Well, to me, if I've got a healthcare violation, that I'm, and I'm not trying to argue, then it's more than just toys out and things like that during the, the day. That's, that's where, kind of where I am. I just, I, I, I'm trying to put this whole thing in, in perspective. And so, you know, I'm, I'm a little concerned with, with that. And so, that's
All right.
just where I am, or what, what, where my mind is. Counsel, do you have any other questions?
I do for Tori.
Okay, Tori?
Hi.
So, her license was revoked, do I understand this, for a number of persistent violations?
Yes.
So, what are those persistent? Not one time, but the persistent ones that she's failed to correct. We have carpet and dishes.
Carpet, carpet and dishes. And just the cleanliness, like the, I don't know if you saw the pictures of the front room, all the stacks of books, the, and there, it has to be free of any kind of debris. The city code states that anything over four foot tall that's not secured to the wall would, it's secured to the wall, but those books are stacked. There, it's just, every time we go in there, it is, it's, there's always issues with the cleanliness of the house.
Okay. And has she been alerted to that formally?
Oh, yeah. We've had, we've had discussions with her about correcting it and...
Okay. So, for persistent violations that might lose her license, there are the carpet stain, the dishes, overall cleanliness, and what else?
So, we've had a problem with the CPR. And they're CPR instructors. But every time we've gone there, she'll just go in the back room and print off CPR cards. So, I don't know if that's a conflict of interest, but there's, it's, it's always...
No, it's not always. This is the first time.
Well, one of them is, no, there, there's been other times.
This is the first time.
And then, just not having all of her paperwork, her filled out, I'm trying to, the bathroom, there's, I don't know if you saw the picture. It's not just, there's dirt on the bathroom, floorboards. There's, it's been a long time since the floor has been cleaned in the bathroom.
No, it was just cleaned before that. I cleaned because I was, I was anticipating the inspection. It was clean.
So, in the past, you've said, you have an issue with cleanliness.
Mm-hmm.
Does she correct it?
Well, to, to some degree, yes. But then, when we go back, there's always garbage piled up in the kitchen, or the, the knives that were left out on the counter. And there's a gate that goes into the counter that's supposed to be, remain closed. And it was open. There were knives and scissors. And so, and she knows that that's a violation. That's, any time a kid can come in and take one of those off the counter. So, it's, and it's, and I explained to her that day, that I understand that this is their home. They live here. But they've also decided to put a daycare in their home. And so, their house is held to a higher standard. And they... And they have to pass these city, these inspections and meet these city codes and health inspection requirements in order for it to be a safe and healthy environment for kids. And it just seems like every time we're out there, there is a, there is always a problem. And the carpet had not been cleaned for a while.
That is not true.
You can see it from the pictures, but that, the carpet was not the main issue. It was the overall cleanliness of the house.
Okay, thank you.
May I?
Other, other questions?
Can I say something? No?
No, I was saying no to him.
No other questions, no other questions?
I'd like to speak on her behalf if I can.
Sure, go ahead. I don't typically let that happen, but...
I know, I understand, I know. I'm Joseph Redd, her husband. And when she addresses about the gate open, and the knives out, and everything, "The daycare were secured asleep in the room before we even opened the gate. There's no, they weren't even around to get in there." So we opened the gate to walk back and forth to clean things. There's no hat, there's no danger for the children, because they're not even present. So that's a time that they clean the house, they clean the kitchen up, from all the stuff they use. During the day, they would go in to get crackers or go whatever, then they'd come back and clean up, because they're concerned with more of the kids. And it's not a matter of, they, the consistent violations are not repeat, because it's always a different variation of the violation. It's always something that's, "Oh, we need to put your cabinet screw against the wall." Okay, we did. Or they pulled it off, and they said it's a violation. The books are stacked up there. They have never addressed that, ever, about the books, of being stacked up, never! The year before they came in, they walked in, didn't say a word, then walked out. No problems. So it's not a matter of them coming in and saying that we're persistent business owners, that we clean, have a dirty home. It's not that. We clean homes. She has a spray disinfectant that she actually sprays everything down every night. She disinfects the carpet every night. We've, she vacuums morning and night before she's done. So, if during the day, there comes dirt or dust, or whatever it may be, I'm sorry. I don't walk behind us every second when you're taking care of children. You're, you're, she's worried about their behavior, how they're treating each other, that they're playing right, she does preschool, she does these things. And there's only six, there's one person per six children. So she's supposed to stand with the children, over in the corner, say, "You stay there while I clean the house," after all the mess they made. Now, that's not realistic. Being realistic is the idea that she takes care of the children, and when she gets the opportunity, she goes back and clean up. There's not a place in this world that you can say that someone follows them every step to clean up after them. They have to have an opportunity to clean, and that's why she chooses that lunchtime. The children are sleeping, there's no one out, that gives her an opportunity to focus on cleaning, and not have to worry about the children. And you're concerned about the health code. You know, with all due respect, there are no checks and balances with the health inspectors. There's no checks and balances with any of this. We assume that they're going to inspect, and what they say is the way it is. It's not always that way. Okay? You can, you can take what I say for what it is, but if somebody wants to find something, they're going to. If somebody really wants to find something bad, they're going to, I don't care who it is. They will dig. And that woman would be down like this, looking around, trying to find something. She asked Jesse about the carpet. "What about this?" She gave him an explanation. "Well, what about that one?" Jesse had an extra fire alarm, smoke alarm, on top of the counter. "Where's this come from?" Jesse says, "That's an extra." She went around the whole house looking for one missing. And there wasn't one. But you can find something if you really want to, and you can destroy some if you want to. But you walk, they walk in, based on their perceptions and assumptions, they can walk and destroy a business without any, any recourse of us having checks and balances, whether they did the job right or not. Again, they took our license away, took everything away, and even if you found that they're wrong, doesn't change anything. The way things are done is wrong. We should have a way of reviewing this and finding out before we destroy our business. There should be someone else come and inspect again to verify that's what's going on, before you destroy someone's business. There should be somehow that protects business owners just as much as anybody else. But there isn't. They can walk in, and they can accuse you of whatever, walk in there, take the business away, and say, "Oh, you can appeal in a month. You tell me, you business owner's gonna recover in a month." It's impossible. Impossible. So when she says that it's recoverable, she's been in business for 25 years, and the, we have never, in Montana, we never had an issue. Not one. But the minute we moved here, the State Department was finding everything. If it wasn't a, a open window, "Oh, that window's open, you can get bats in it." Or, "Oh, by the way, you have this." Something that never was even addressed is now a violation. I'm sorry, but if this, I'm, you can determine whether I'm telling the truth or not. Okay? That's your decision. That's your determination. But I'm not here to argue with anything other than the procedures that you have in place is bad. It's bad for business, it's bad for the community, and it's bad for everyone in general. It's bad for those children that we took care of. It's bad for those parents, they had to come get their kids, and listen to them yelling at us. These people are not being very professional. They yell at her. They get this far from her face, screaming at her. You are, you're what? What about the, you are what? Negligent?
Negligent.
We have another business. We have three other trained and licensed providers. So she would go and do a couple rides for us, and she's negligent, because she, like, she should be allowed to go, she has licensed providers there. You can't expect your director to be there all the time if they have licensed providers. So why would you go up to someone and scream at them, and tell them they're negligent? Because they drove a car to pick up somebody, and their licensed provider's there. I'm sorry, it's, it's this something that was ongoing. I even tried to talk to you once, and they refused to let me talk to you. Flat out, "No, I am not setting an appointment with you, no, I'm not even talking to you." The sheriff I tried to talk to, "No, I am not setting an appointment, I refuse to let you talk to me." Flat out. So who are we supposed to do if we can't even come to the people that we need help I'm sorry, that's what I have to say.
Thank, thank you.
Mayor, I have another question for Tori.
Okay, we have Tori, we have one more question, then Jesse, I'm gonna give you a opportunity to just say a few things, a, a last few things, and then we'll go from there.
So, so how does this work? Once a license is revoked, is it, can it be reinstated? And if not, is it possible for somebody to reapply at a later date in a different location under different circumstances?
If, if, tonight, if you, if this council cites to withhold the revocation of her license, she has a year, she, she can reapply in a year, and then go from there. I think we, then, at that time, an inspector and the health department and the fire department would also have to go out and do an inspection on the house to make sure that it's, meets the, the standard of a daycare.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jesse, if you'd like to say a few things.
You don't, if you don't have- Well, I guess, I just wanna, just, I, I guess I don't have any more to say. I just wanna thank you guys for listening to me and my husband, and, and hopefully, some of these things can, can change the, what my husband was saying is absolutely the way it happened. You know, we did not get a chance to correct anything before it was revoked. And then, it was a whole month before this hearing, so, I don't, I don't know, just, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Lurick?
These situations are always so difficult. This is, I think, everybody's least favorite part of our position up here. There's never an easy answer. But, the main concern, I think, for everybody is the health and welfare and safety of the children, and that has to come first. What concerns me is, and you talk about the processes and the system, and that it's not working, but there's a couple of different things going on here. There are city code violations, and there's also state-level health and welfare violations. We don't control that. There are state standards that are, according to those officials inspecting the daycare, those are not being met. So, that is concerning to me. I also think some of the statement about, and this was in the written statement, about the fire officials and police officials being there as an intimidation tactic, they're there to check safety. All of this is about safety. So I'm-
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
This is not a discussion at this point. Thank you. But, it feels like that's all part of the process, and it is all about trying to make sure that this is a safe facility and environment for children. I feel like, you know, I'm sure the system isn't perfect, but everybody's doing the best they can to make sure that codes are met, that standards are met, that it is a safe environment. And it feels like there are repeated violations that are happening, or, or even new ones that are coming up. And so that concerns me. And, like I said, this is not an easy decision, but I move that we uphold the revocation and deny the appeal.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Lurick, and a second by Marchand. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you, Council. Thank you very much. Sorry that it had come out the way you hoped.
It was expected, so we didn't-
Okay, all right, thank you. Then we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, is a public hearing. Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan. This time has been set aside for, for the council to receive public comment on the proposed Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan. The CDBG Advisory Committee recently completed its annual grant application, I'm struggling here for some reason, concluding with the recommendation of approval at their meeting on December 20, 2022. The required public comment period began January 6, 2023, and concludes February 2, 2023. Following the public hearing, the council may wish to endorse or modify the advisory committee's recommendations and authorized submission, including any public comment to the PY 2023 Action Plan and to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. The council may wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all, on all requisite contract documents subject to legal department review with HUD, and any subsequent, sub recipients or subcontractors. I wonder if we can shorten that all up in the future. But with that, I declare the public hearing clo, opened. Open, not closing it before it starts. It's gonna be a long night.
Good evening, Mayor Blatt, and members of the City Council. My name is Christine Howe, and I'm the grants manager for the city's Planning and Development Services Department. I'm responsible for the administration and management of the city's Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG program, which is our annual federal entitlement program administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. As described by the mayor, this public hearing is the oral comment opportunity for the city's Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan. The 2023 program year begins April 1 and concludes March 31 of 2024. All CDBG entitlement communities are required to submit an annual action plan, and this is due at least 45 days before the start of the program year. The action plan serves as our strategic plan for achieving the goals outlined in the city's five-year CDBG consolidated plan that was adopted by the City Council last year. This action plan is year two of the 2022-2026 Consolidated Plan, and the annual action plan projects, the annual action plan projects reflect the priorities established by the consolidated plan, which include housing, public services, public infrastructure, public facilities, and planning and administration. The city's estimated the program year funding to be equal to the previous year at about $425,000, with an anticipated $25,000 in additional program income. In order to identify the specific activities that would meet the consolidated plan goals for 2023, the city's CDBG Advisory Committee conducted an application process beginning in September of 2022. This included attendance at a technical assistance meeting, submission of statements of interest, final application materials, and presentations to the advisory committee. At the conclusion of this process, the advisory committee voted on recommendations for funding, and these recommendations were included in your packets as the PY 2023 proposed budget. Activities that were recommended included lead hazard control work, the city's renewal program, mobile home repair grants, acquisition of a lot for future low to moderate income home, homeless services, after-school programming, transportation services for persons with disabilities, dental services for uninsured, emergency social service assistance, and nutrition programs for seniors. In addition, funding included sidewalks and ADA ramps, the annual contribution for the new homeless shelter, fair housing activities, and our grant administration. Per the city's adopted CDBG Citizen Participation Plan in accordance with HUD requirements, the city posted these documents for a written comment period of at least 15 days, and will conclude the public comment with this hearing tonight. Copies of this recommendation have been made available for the public to access at the Marshall Library, Neighbor Works, Pocatello, Life, Inc., the Housing Authority, City Hall, and on the city website. The comment period began on January 6, 2023, at noon, and concludes with this oral comment opportunity. All comments will be incorporated into the annual action plan. To date, we've received no written comments. So following tonight's hearing, the council may wish to vote to approve the documents and authorize submission of the annual action plan, along with any additional elements required to meet U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requirements, and to submit to HUD for review and approval. That concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions.
Questions, Council?
I have a comment, not a question, but just wanted to thank you for all the work on putting this together, and all the input that you got from all the different constituencies just to, to put together a strong plan. I know it's a lot of work, and want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Christine, have you received any written correspondence in your office?
None received.
Madam Clerk, have we received any in the clerk's office? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, do you want to keep speaking? You got a few minutes if you do. If not, I'm gonna, okay. Then, thank you. I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel assigns before you had a wish to proceed. Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, what am I doing? Approving-
Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we what am I doing? Approving. I move that we approve the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan as outlined in Agenda Item Number Seven. And we endorse and modify the advisory committee's recommendations and authorize submission, including any public comments of the action plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the mayor's signature on all requisite contract documents subject to legal department review with HUD and any sub recipients or subcontractors.
One second.
It was a hard one, wasn't it?
It was, it was long.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Nichols. I will not repeat the motion.
Good, 'cause I couldn't.
With that, Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Agenda Item Eight, Airport Grant Agreement and Resolution. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a grant agreement and all pertinent documents and adopt a resolution accepting a grant offer from the Idaho Transportation Department Division of Aeronautics. The grant is for $15,000, which will be used to provide required match funds for FAA Airport Improvement Program grant funds. The project will be completed, will be completed using the funds including include design of Runway 3/21 Rehab and airfield pavement management plan and purchase of a plow truck with the with the ice with the ice trailer and loader with ramp plow. Councilwoman Lurick?
I move that we approve the Airport Grant Agreement and Resolution as outlined in Agenda Item Number Eight and authorize the mayor to sign a grant agreement and all pertinent documents. I'll end there.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Lurick and a second by Marchand. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. I don't think he can hear you very good over there. We need to figure that out. All righty. Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Department of Homeland Security Fiscal Year 2022 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Application. Council may wish to approve and authorize submission of the following grant applications, and if awarded, authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The grants are as follows: A, a grant application for a Type 5 Wildland Engine in the amount of $266,798 under HGA-C by contract number FS 12-19. There is a 10% local match of $25,680, which the department would request approval to use Fund 78 in fiscal year 24 or fiscal year 25, based on delivery for the match amount, and B, a grant application for five thermal five thermal imaging cameras. The cost of the cameras is $52,850. There is a 10% local match of $5,285, which will be budgeted for equipment in FY 24.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Nine as listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Community Rating System Removal Request. Council may wish to approve the city of Pocatello withdrawal from the voluntary Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Community Rating System CRS Program. Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion, but I did wanna just make a comment that we will continue to participate in the National Insurance Program and some of the educational opportunities that are part of that program. This is not getting rid of that. It's just the the local insurance policies. The savings are really not what's the word I'm looking for? We're not, it, the cost benefit analysis did not show that this was something that we should keep doing. So we can save some money here, but we are not getting out of this whole program completely. So I just wanted to make that clear. And with that, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Ten, Community Rating System Removal Request and withdraw from the voluntary Federal Emergency Management Agency Community Rating System Program.
Second.
All right, Rick got a second in there. We've got a motion by Lurick and a second by Council President Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Nichols? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Employee Handbook Amendments Request Human Resources. Council may wish to consider approving the following changes to the employee handbook. A, addition of background check policy for employees amending the current process regarding interdepartmental transfer, and B, addition to Section D, employee employment policy and practices, layoff, and recall, adding a clear, adding a clear process for temporary variable hour and seasonal employee. God, I am struggling.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Eleven as written.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Marchand and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Yes.
Nichols?
Thank you. Agenda Item Twelve, Server Space Purchase for Police Department Records. Council may wish to approve a request by the police department to purchase additional server capacity for video and body camera footage. The current network attached storage NAS system is near capacity, and the proposed purchase of 180 terabyte of storage in the amount of $11,987.44 is available in Fund 78.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lurick?
I move that we approve the server space purchase for the police department as outlined in Agenda Item Number Twelve.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Nichols. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes. Cheatham?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Thirteen, Surplus in Sell and Sell of Seized Asset Request, Police Department. Council may wish to accept the following request from the Pocatello Police Department, subject to legal department review. A, declare one vehicle as surplus that was purchased with narcotics funds and has been in use by the narcotics unit for several years, and B, authorize the sale of the vehicle through auction and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents. Councilwoman Lurick?
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Thirteen, the surplus and sale of seized assets from the police department or by the police department as outlined in A and B of Agenda Item Number Thirteen.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Agenda Item Fourteen, Airport Lease Termination Lease Agreement and Resolution. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the following agreements and resolution for property at the airport. A, a termination of lease agreement for the hangar property leased between the city and Dennis Jensen. And if approved, B, a lease agreement and resolution between the city and SR 22 LLC for approximately 7,200 square feet of property upon which they own an aircraft hangar. The lease agreement will be for a 20-year term at a rental rate of $2,001.60 per year, to be increased annually according to the CPI, with full rate review in 2026 and every five years thereafter.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Fourteen as listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Agenda Item Fifteen, Airport Lease Amendments and Resolutions. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the following lease amendment and resolution for property at the airport. A, an amendment to resolution, an amendment and resolution to the lease agreement between the city and Pocatello TMX to correct an error in the legal property description, and B, an amendment and resolution to the lease agreement between the city and East Idaho BMX to correct an error in the legal property description.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move to approve Agenda Item Number Sixteen as written.
Fifteen or sixteen? Okay, fifteen. He was getting ahead of us.
Big numbers.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Marchand and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Agenda Item Sixteen, Airport Use Agreement, Pocatello TMX. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a use agreement with Pocatello TMX for use of additional property outside their leased area for April, from April 28 through the 30th, 2023, for a cross-country off-road motocross race. The fee for use will be $200. Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the airport use agreement with Pocatello TMX as outlined in Agenda Item Number Sixteen.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Lurick and a second by Marchand. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Agenda Item Seventeen, Airport Lease Agreement and Resolution, Idaho Star. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement and resolution between the city and Idaho Star for approximately 5,896 square feet of property upon which they have a motorcycle safety training classroom. The proposed lease is for five-year, is for a five-year term at a rental rate of $124.04 per month, which will increase annually according to the CPI, with full rate review in 2026 and every five years thereafter.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Seventeen as written.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Marchand and a second by Nichols. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Agenda Item Eighteen, Local Professional Services Agreement and Consultant Services Agreement, Hawthorne Quinn Safety Project. Council may wish to approve a local professional services agreement between the city of Pocatello, Idaho Transportation Department, and Atlas Technical Consultants LLC, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. There is no additional financial requirement or match for the project. The full match for the project has previously been met. Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Eighteen, the professional services agreement and consultant service agreement, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Marchand. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make one quick comment?
Sure.
I'm just really excited to see that project move forward, so.
Nice.
Yes, I just wanted to comment on that. It's it's been a long time coming, and to see some some movement is really exciting, so. Thanks to our staff.
Yep, thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Nineteen, An Ordnance Amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title 17, Chapters 17.01, General Provisions 17.02, Land Use Decision, what am I struggling here? Land Use Decisions 17.03, Zoning Districts 17.04, Overlay Areas, and 17.05 Development Standards to remove redundancies, provide clarity, and improve the function of the title.
Mr. Mayor?
Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance, in Agenda Item Number Nineteen, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Marchand. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An Ordnance of the City of Pocatello, a Municipal Corporation of Idaho, amending sections of Title 17 zoning regulations of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello. More particularly by amending Chapter 17.01 General Provisions, Chapter 17.02 Land Use Decisions. That is hard to say. Chapter 17.03 Zoning Districts, Chapter 17.04 Overlay Areas, and Chapter 17.05 Development Standards to remove redundancies, provide clarity, and improve the function of the title, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Cheatham?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item Twenty, the State of the City. This time has been set aside for the Annual State of the City Report. Do we have a video, and are we going to drop the things? Do we need to do that? They don't trust me with the remote up here, and so.
This is for an hour and a half prior. Nothing should go wrong.
I just want to, before we get started with the State of the City, I just want to thank our staff and tell them how much we appreciate all that they do. It's an amazing group of people to work with. They they do amazing things. We have asked, I have, we've recorded this because I would like to put some other faces to the names, and I would also like to be able to show some of the projects that we've done. We truly have an amazing staff, and and it's it's awesome. I'm supposed to keep talking. Wow. But but we do have, and I am excited about what we've accomplished. This last year has been an amazing year to get through. We, and I can't tell you, I couldn't be prouder of of what we've been able to accomplish and the things that that have happened because of our our staff. We sit up here, and we can say yes or no to things, but nothing happens without the people we have working with for us and with us. So with that, are we ready? She's ready now. I've been looking forward to the State of the City address, as I do every year. It's exciting to be able to share with you what we've been able to accomplish as a city. Our departments have worked hard. Our employees are very proud of what they've done and what we've accomplished this last year. year. So with no further ado, we hired a new chief financial officer, Gene Hill, and a new public information officer, Marlies Erby. We also saw many great promotions across the city, including the promotion of Ryan O'Hern to fire chief. The mayor's million-minute reading challenge had a record year with elementary students reading over 2 million minutes in February. In 2022, five lucky students received the Pocatello's Promise of Tomorrow's Mayoral Scholarship for $2,500 per student. That makes 15 scholarships awarded since the program started in 2020. Myself and the city council together helped fund new permitting software for the building and planning departments, a new tower truck for the fire department, additional funds for pavement management, a department-wide driving simulator, a new traffic signal for South Valley-Bannock Highway intersection, and much more. In 2022, four new council members joined the city. The mayor's youth advisory council, also known as MIAC, won another Association of Idaho Cities Award for their Pen Pals program, and this group of local high school students continue to do great things in our community. Across the city of Pocatello, departments are working hard each and every day to assist community members and continue economic growth in Pocatello.
My name is Allen Evans. I am the airport manager at the Pocatello Regional Airport. I'd like to share with you some of the projects that we have completed this past year. The airport purchased a new piece of airfield snow removal equipment. It is a multi-use truck with a plow and a broom combination, allowing staff to be more efficient by being able to plow and broom at the same time. This truck was purchased from MB Companies using a combination of federal grant funds and airport passenger facility charge revenues. The second item would be the expansion of the Bureau of Land Management Wildland Fire Attack Base. This project began in 2022 and will be completed in 2023. The expansion will add a third loading pad and increase the size of the two existing pads, allowing for accommodation of multiple VLAD, which are very large air tankers, to work out of that airfield at the same time. The airport also began an update to its master plan for the airfield, which will be completed in 2023. The plan will look at projected growth and needs for the airfield infrastructure to assist the airport in selecting future capital projects. The airport welcomed a new tenant, Morton Buildings. Morton's new facility will be completed soon and will manufacture post-frame buildings. We also welcomed a new hangar being built by AV Center. The new hangar will also be completed soon and will be able to hangar large corporate jets. The airport origami art exhibit has completed phases one through three, providing the airport with a unique, world-class exhibit of origami art, including 1,000 suspended cranes, multiple tessellations, and several different kusidamas. Phase four, which is a silk origami rose exhibit, will be completed in 2023.
Hi, I'm Chris Abbott, Pocatello Animal Services Director. We had an exciting year this year and look forward to the new year. In 2022, Pocatello Animal Services added an enrichment room as well as finished-the-play yard for our animals. By utilizing the play yard, this allows volunteers and staff individual time to help stimulate animals in an active environment and helps decrease anxiety. The Pocatello Animal Shelter has maintained its no-kill status and will continue working with other shelter agencies and rescues to transfer and home animals. In 2022, Pocatello Animal Services hired a veterinarian part-time, Dr. Shelley Hill. Hill performs spay and neuters in the shelter and other various medical necessities. Having Hill helps reduce the cost of outsourcing veterinary needs and helps the turnaround time to get animals at the shelter adopted faster.
Hi, I'm Richard Bigelow, building official for the city of Pocatello. We've seen tremendous growth despite the dramatic increase in cost of construction materials after the pandemic in 2020. Permits issued through the building department totaled 2,580. Of those numbers, 283 were residential building permits and 83 were commercial building permits. In fiscal year 2022, the total number of inspections completed by the building department was 4,472. Additionally, the IT department will be assisting the planning and building department in their implementation of a new community development platform. This new software will provide citizens with the online self-service portal to increase efficiency with permitting and requesting inspections.
Hi, I'm Ryan O'Hern. I'm the fire chief with the Pocatello Fire Department. 2022 was a really busy year for us operationally, but it also gave us an opportunity to do some new things with our community risk reduction program. We were excited to partner with Southeast Idaho Community Action and Agency. We accompanied their Meals on Wheels program during October to deliver meals to residents and check smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. This enabled us to get into the homes of residents to ensure that they had working smoke and carbon monoxide alarms for their safety. We also initiated an naloxone leave-behind program. Naloxone, otherwise known as Narcan, saves lives. The aim of this program is to improve the safety and health outcomes for individuals that have experienced or are at risk for an opioid overdose. Idaho's naloxone access law was updated in July 2021, allowing for naloxone to be distributed via leave-behind programs by first responders. This bill permits entities to further distribute naloxone to the public and their employees. We completed a triannual airport drill in conjunction with the Pocatello Regional Airport. Under federal aviation administration requirements, the airport is required to do a full-scale exercise every three years. The airport partnered with the Pocatello Fire Department, Pocatello Police Department, Pocatello Regional Transit, and other surrounding agencies to perform this exercise. During the simulated plane crash scenario, units responded to perform fire suppression and stabilize the scene. Additional units performed medical evaluation on patients. This enabled crews to accurately triage patients in order to ensure patients were delivered to the appropriate medical facility in a timely manner. Pocatello Fire Department sent multiple units on wildland fire deployments to assist with wildfires in Idaho and surrounding states. Most notably, crews assisted on the Moose Fire in Salmon, Idaho, and crews were also sent to fires in central Idaho, Nevada, Utah, and New Mexico. These incidents are an example of our department's participation in the national response framework. The PFD received an assistance to firefighters grant for the purchase of a new wildland engine, or otherwise known as brush truck. In addition, the city of Pocatello agreed to purchase a new brush truck, and ICCU graciously matched those funds for the purchase of a third brush truck. These trucks were desperately needed as several of our units were at or near 30 years old and were no longer meeting the needs of the community. The PFD is anticipating the arrival of the three new brush trucks in January of 2023, and they will be in use for the fire season of 2023. The cost per wildland engine is $170,565.
Hi, I'm Chris Sorensen in the IT department for the city of Pocatello, and I am the chief information officer for the city. Information Technology Department primarily focuses its support to internal customers, that is, our city employees. However, their mission ultimately supports the citizens of our community by protecting their information and enabling tools for the departments that directly support the citizens. In 2022, the IT department rolled out multi-factor authentication to its employees to help bolster the city's cybersecurity footing and reduce the risk of malicious actors obtaining and utilizing legitimate login credentials. Additionally, the IT department completed its implementation of the Paymentis Credit Card Online Payment System. It expanded the platform's utilization beyond that of just utility billing to all other city departments that accept credit or debit card transactions. The deployment of the system also includes three areas that accept donations, that is, the Brady Chapel, Zoo Idaho, and the animal shelter. The Paymentis platform provides a simplified way for users to utilize payment cards, reduced and stabilized purchase card fees, while passing those fees directly to card users, as opposed to the city absorbing those fees at all taxpayers' expense. In 2023, the IT department plans to upgrade the phone system at the city hall, the Pocatello Police Department, and the Water Department by replacing its outdated unified call center to a more robust and capable cloud-based telephony system, eliminating long-distance charges while enabling more user-friendly capabilities. The IT department will also continue its focus on improving the cybersecurity for all of the city's networks, data, and information by bringing on additional tools and capabilities to reduce risks and address vulnerabilities.
Hello, I'm Eric Sees, director of the Marshall Public Library. We've had a very busy year filled with lots of projects and programs for our community. So far this year, the Marshall Public Library has had 108,308 visitors to the library and 1,809 new library cards have been processed, plus 133,145 items have been checked out with an additional 33,902 eBooks. Earlier this year, the Marshall Public Library received a wonderful gift from the Friends of the Marshall Public Library. The Friends purchased $12,000 worth of new furniture for our community to enjoy. This gift offers guests places to sit and enjoy the welcoming atmosphere of our library. The Marshall Public Library also had a very successful summer reading program this year. Over 350 people came to our kickoff event for our summer program, Oceans of Possibilities. The library was full of fish since we added one for each patron who signed up. At the end of the summer, the Friends of the Library provided many fun prizes for patrons who completed all of their reading challenges.
Hello, Pocatello. I'm John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director for the city of Pocatello, and this year we have seen many exciting developments in the community. In 2022, the new Zoo Connections Entrance and Gift Shop Building at Zoo Idaho was completed and dedicated. The beautiful log cabin design structures approximately 1,200 square feet in size and features ticketing areas, a gift shop, concessions, and restroom facilities. The facility opened during the 2022 Zoo Idaho season and was constructed in-house by Parks and Recreation Department staff, providing for a tremendous cost savings to the community and taxpayers. A sincere thank you from the city of Pocatello to Connections Credit Union and the Zoo Idaho Zoological Society for their generous support in helping to make the Zoo Connections Entrance and Gift Shop Building a reality for the community. With inception of the Parks and Recreation Department's partnership program, we've been able to accomplish so much for the community. The program provides opportunities for community partners to work together with Parks and Recreation to achieve significant projects and improvements for the use and enjoyment of the Pocatello community. Partner benefits include significant and meaningful returns on investment, including naming rights, and when we dream big and work together, just about anything is possible. In 2022, the Parks and Recreation Department was able to work with Idaho Central Credit Union for two successful partnerships, the first being ICCU's purchase and donation of a Piston Bully snow grooming machine for the Mink Creek Nordic Center, which will allow for high-quality grooming of the Nordic Center on an ongoing basis for decades to come. ICCU is also partnering with Parks and Recreation for development of a new and exciting splash pad facility at OK Ward Park, set to be constructed during the summer of 2023. The Idaho Central Credit Union Community Splash Pad will provide approximately 2,700 square feet of play zone, including a variety of above-ground and ground-level features, as well as an additional concrete pad area for parents and family members to gather, observe, and interact. Arthur Avenue and Holiday Street area improvements. Parks Department staff successfully collaborated with the Science and Environmental Division and the IF Foundation to accomplish significant beautification improvements at the area of Arthur Avenue and Holiday Street. Project improvements included grading, a new irrigation system, curbing, weed barrier and landscape, and trees to transform the previously unkempt area into an attractive intersection for the community. Key fiscal year 23 projects will include completion of the Ross Park Master Plan for council adoption consideration. Staff has been busy developing and finalizing the draft master plan for Ross Park, built on inputs solicited from the community and with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board serving as a steering committee. Ross Park is the gem of the city of Pocatello's park system and has over 145 acres of available land, approximately 95 acres of which are currently developed. The goal of the process is to craft a five-to-25-year master plan to guide the future development of Ross Park, which will enrich its recreational and cultural opportunities while maintaining and enhancing its natural beauty and historical, recreational, and educational features. Staff plans to bring the final draft version of the master plan forward for city council in the first quarter of 2023 for review and adoption consideration. Lookout Point, Lookout Credit Union. Groundbreaking took place in the summer of 2022 for the new Lookout Point Park located in historic downtown Pocatello. The city of Pocatello would like to thank Lookout Credit Union for their generous donation and Historic Downtown Pocatello for all of their work in bringing this exciting new park to the community. The park will provide the citizens a new town square to enjoy live music, great events, farmers markets, and more. Completion is set for summer 2023.
Hello, this is Chief Roger Shiwit, Pocatello Police Department. I'm here to talk about a few accomplishments we achieved this year and about the great men and women that serve this great community. In August 2022, the Pocatello Police Department received a new 30-foot mobile command vehicle donated to us by Operation Underground Railroad. Cost to build and equip the vehicle was approximately $450,000. The vehicle was custom-built by SVCI, Specialty Vehicle Concepts Incorporated. The unit can be deployed as a mobile command center with the ability to run real-time dispatch. Tactical briefings can also be held outside the vehicle. The unit has four exterior cameras that record continuously and seven high-definition monitors mounted inside and one mounted outside of the vehicle. The command vehicle has an interior interview room with audio and visual capabilities to assist with internet crimes against children investigations. A big thank you to Operation Underground Railroad and SVCI for making this possible. Evidence storage. Recently, the Pocatello Police Department faced the unavoidable problem of running out of space to store evidence. Due to state evidence mandates, the department is required to secure certain pieces of evidence for 50-plus years. Modular shelves are the most cost-effective option to provide an increased storage capacity that will benefit the department for the next 15 to 20 years. The height of each shelf can be adjusted and each shelving unit can be moved from side to side, creating more space without adding additional square footage to our building. City council approved a budget of up to $150,000 to aid the police department in resolving this storage space issue. The Pocatello Police Department purchased the modular shelving system and was able to come in under the approved budget. ICOPA reaccreditation. The Pocatello Police Department successfully completed the Idaho Chiefs of Police Association, or ICOPA, accreditation. The purpose of ICOPA's accreditation is to establish a professional standards program for law enforcement agencies and ensure that those standards are being met and maintained. PPD was initially accredited in 2012. This is the third consecutive reaccreditation through ICOPA. Dispatch receives ACE accreditation. The Pocatello Police Fire and Ambulance Dispatch Center is an accredited center of excellence, or ACE, in emergency medical dispatch. The International Academies of Emergency Dispatch, or IAED, ACE accreditation is the gold standard for emergency communication centers. The Pocatello Dispatch Center is only the 306th communication center in the world and the first in Idaho to receive an ACE certification.
Hello, my name is Jeff Manswell. I'm the Public Works Director and City Engineer for the city of Pocatello. As a city engineer, I oversee the engineering department, which provides services to all the city departments as well as the city as a whole. One of the projects that we've been involved in in 2022 has been the Clark Street ADA project. The city of Pocatello seeks grants annually to improve sidewalks and pedestrian safety. For fiscal year 2022, we received about $300,000 to improve pedestrian mobility. The 5310 Federal Transit Administration Program aims to improve mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities by removing barriers to transportation service and expanding options. The Clark Street ADA Improvements Project included filling in 120-foot gap on the sidewalk with concrete sidewalk and concrete block wall on the 1,800 block of Clark Street, 35 updated curb ramps, and nine asphalt approaches along the north side of Clark Street. The project started at 18th Street and ran to Pocatello Avenue. The project is now an updated accessible route with continuous sidewalks for the community. In addition, the GIS department recently negotiated a new enterprise agreement that allows for 250 users, a large increase from previous agreement, which limited us to less than 15. The agreement significantly expands the accessibility of our GIS software to the following departments: fire, EMS, public safety, police, planning, environmental, and PRT. Expanded access to the software allows the GIS department to better support the needs of our departments while also providing a better return on investments.
Hi, I'm Tom Kirkman, the Deputy Public Works Director for the city of Pocatello. The Street Operations Department consists of the Street Division and the The Street Operations Department consists of the Street Division and the Traffic Division. In fiscal year 2022, the Street Division improved over 26 miles of roadway in its annual pavement management program, utilizing targeted treatments such as fog sealing, microsealing, and paving. The Traffic Division successfully expanded the intelligent transportation system network to include the signals within the historic downtown area, which allows proactive signal monitoring to reduce traffic disruptions. In addition, the Traffic Division has also utilized Idaho Power's energy efficiency incentive to upgrade many Pocatello streetlights to LEDs in order to reduce energy consumption. This program has helped create ongoing savings to the city's monthly energy costs. These new long-life LED fixtures also require less maintenance, which results in fewer disruptions to traffic. In fiscal year 2022, the Sanitation Department has seen a 6% increase in services. They've also collected over 2,800 tons of recycling materials through its curbside pickup, composting, and glass recycling programs. These efforts have diverted over 13% of refuse that would have otherwise made it to the local landfill. This equates to over 5 million pounds of material diverted from the landfill to a nearby recycling center. Fleet Services is an internal service department that effectively maintains the majority of the city's 600 assets, including police and public works vehicles and equipment, allowing city workers to focus on proudly serving the public. Fleet Services is also working to right-size the city's asset count through a capital replacement plan. This goal aims to decrease long-term procurement costs and eliminate redundancies while simultaneously increasing efficiencies for many city departments. Fleet Services was also awarded a Technical and Management Innovation Award for their cost-reduction and problem-solving efforts.
Hi, my name is Drew Reimersma with the Science and Environment Division. This division engages in a lot of projects that focus on environmental sustainability. This April, the city of Pocatello hosted the 2022 Portneffe Valley Environmental Fair. This family-friendly community event was attended by 2,000 community members of all ages, giving guests the opportunity to hear, experience, and learn what our local organizations, nonprofits, and educational establishments are doing to build a more sustainable future for the Portneffe Valley. Another project we focused on was the Portneffe River Cleanup. In August, the city organized the 2022 Portneffe River Cleanup. This event was attended by 40 incredible volunteers who, in only two short hours, helped to free the river of six cubic yards of trash and debris and moved us that much closer to making the Portneffe River vision a reality. Thanks to their continued efforts year after year, the Portneffe River is becoming a more beautiful and enjoyable place to recreate. Another project was the Russian olive removal up City Creek. City staff hired a contractor to kill around 200 Russian olive trees up City Creek in February and March 2022. This opened up a canopy adjacent to the stream down by the lower parking lot. Volunteers planted willows, and Parks and Recreation staff installed a gravel path adjacent to the stream between the parking lot and Bridge One.
I'm Justin Armstrong, City of Pocatello Water Superintendent. The Water Department produced and treated 4.7 billion gallons of water that it delivered to its consumers. Capital projects included the replacement of 1.9 miles of water mains throughout city neighborhoods, which included Opal Street, North Hayes Street, and West Sublet Street. Additional projects included the 5-million-gallon tank interior recoding project, exploratory drilling of two test wells, and construction of the Pocatello Creek Booster Station and Transmission Line, which is projected to be completed in late spring of 2023. The Pocatello Creek Booster Station and Transmission Line project includes a new high-pressure booster, pumping station, and approximately 2.5 miles of water transmission pipeline to connect the city's water sources to the Highland Water Storage Tanks. The finished project will resolve a longstanding deficiency of redundant water supply and include space for future expansion to address future projected water demands in the northeast area of Pocatello.
Hello, I'm Levi Adams, Superintendent for the Water Pollution Control Department. Water Pollution Control was very productive in 2022, working on a variety of projects to improve operations and infrastructure. These projects were done in support of our mission to protect the public health, the water quality of the Portneffe River, and groundwater in the aquifer underneath our city. The treatment facility cleaned over 2.5 billion gallons of water, exceeding regulatory standards by removing over 99.5% of all contaminants. In addition to the day-to-day operations of the department, the main focus of WPC staff was to complete the design of a new dewatering facility, which will improve our ability to manage biosolids and keep up with growth of our community. This new facility will also open the door to the possibility of introducing a composting program as an additional alternative to managing biosolids in the future. Major improvements were made to the collection system infrastructure with the upgrade of the Whitman Street lift station and the addition of a new lift station on the opposite side of the Portneffe River on Hayes Street. The integrity of the collection system was also improved with continuation of the sanitary sewer rehabilitation project, which included the installation of 10,291 linear feet of cured-in-place pipe and various point repairs to sewer mainlines. Collection System staff inspected several miles of new subdivision sewer mainline, as well as many other existing mainlines throughout town. They completed annual cleaning of over 260 miles of high-pressure and gravity mainlines, which will increase the life of the sewer mains by reducing the gases that will corrode the pipes, and they replaced worn and uneven manholes and collars on many city streets. The WPC laboratory and pretreatment personnel completed several hundred inspections of businesses and industrial users to ensure compliance with the city of Pocatello ordinances. Staff also tested and analyzed the water entering and exiting the treatment facility to ensure full compliance with the limits set forth in our Idaho Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit.
Hello, I am Skylar Beebe, the Pocatello Public Transit Director. 2022 was a great year for Pocatello Regional Transit. We provided over 185,000 boardings, which represented about a 15% increase from fiscal year 2021. In June, the department received a brand-new 30-foot Transit Coach, the first new bus of this style since 2007. The bus is ADA-accessible, can accommodate up to 45 passengers, and was funded 100% by the CARES Act grant from the Federal Transit Administration. PRT also amended a 5310 Federal Transit Administration capital grant for the purpose of bus stop improvements. The grant federally funded 80% of the purchase of three new bus stop shelters and 250 bus stop signs in the fixed route system. Local match for the shelters was provided by the Gate City Rotary and Housing Alliance and community partnerships. In 2023, PRT is looking to receive four cutaway buses that will be ADA-compliant. Three will be placed into the urban program and one into the rural program. These will replace buses that have over 300,000 miles. The project will be funded 80% by a 5339 grant from the Federal Transit Administration. PRT also plans to complete the implementation of the 100% CARES Act-funded Intelligent Transportation System. The project will update the fixed route and demand response mobile data terminals, dispatch software, and provide real-time passenger information features for citizens.
Hello, I'm Brent McLean, Director of Planning and Community Development Services Department. Fiscal year 22 has kept our department active and busy with numerous projects and applications. The Our Valley, Our Vision Initiative for the Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040, a 20-year vision of Fort Pocatello, has kept all planning staff busy this past year by interpreting community input to creating goals and strategies for the future of the city into a document that is expected to be unveiled and adopted in the first half of 2023. The Historic Preservation Commission received a grant through the Idaho State Historic Preservation Office's Certified Local Government Program for $15,000. This grant included $5,000 to host Idaho's Heritage Conference, which took place in September 2022, and $10,000 to update the design guidelines for Pocatello's downtown historic district. HPC, along with the Friends of the Brady Chapel, are continuing to solicit donations from the public and businesses, as well as continuing to apply for grants to restore the Brady Chapel. The city was awarded its first U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield Assessment Grant. The grant award totals $500,000 and will provide funding to complete a site inventory, as well as conduct Phase I and Phase II site assessments on properties that may qualify as brownfields. Pocatello received the only assessment grant in Idaho, and one of three Idaho applicants awarded a grant from the EPA this year. Fiscal year 2022 marked the first year in which the newly adopted and HUD-approved CDBG Consolidated Plan was underway. The Consolidated Plan serves as the five-year strategic plan to guide CDBG funding to assist low-to-modern-income individuals and achieve the program goals to provide decent housing, create a suitable living environment, and expand opportunities for low-to-modern-income persons. CDBG administered projects or provided funding for Family Services Alliance, St. Vincent de Paul, Neighbor Works Pocatello Mobile Home Rehab's, Renewal Rehab Loans and Grants, Lead Hazard Control Work, Aid for Friends New Day Products, Salvation Army, and the Senior Activity Center. In addition, the CDBG program administered nearly $200,000 in CARES Act funding, providing local public service agencies with over $180,000 in grants to administer services and respond to, prepare for, and prevent COVID-19. CDBGCV was also used to provide emergency rental and mortgage assistance to those qualifying applicants affected by the pandemic. Approximately $72,650,000 was granted through 64 transactions to cover monthly rent or mortgage payments for low- and modern-income residents in the community. The city's Lead Safe &amp; Healthy Homes program was fully underway in fiscal year 2022. The city was awarded over $2.5 million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and began its program year in November of 2021. With the funding, the Lead Safe &amp; Healthy Homes program conducted EPA-certified lead abatement worker and supervisor training for over 20 local contractors and laborers. In addition, the city conducted an EPA renovation, repair, and painting training for over 20 local contractors and workers in April. Throughout fiscal year 22, the Lead Safe &amp; Healthy Homes program remediated lead hazards in eight units, providing over $100,000 in lead hazard grants, or an average grant of All eight of the properties also received Healthy Homes grants to provide needed health and safety repairs and supplies such as railings, CO-compliant stairs, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, and HEPA vacuums. Healthy Homes grants totaled over $19,000, for an average grant of about $2,500.
Is that it?
Nice job. Very nice.
That was absolutely incredible. Thank you so much. As you can see, our employees continue to go above and beyond at everything that they do. It's amazing to think of the things that were accomplished in 2022. I'm extremely excited to see what's going to happen in 2023. I can't wait to see what our new council does. They have already sat down, set goals, they have plans, and it's very exciting to see where we're moving. As you look into our community right now, unemployment, there's 1.7 jobs for every person that's looking for a job right now. We have an unemployment rate of 2.2% as of right now, and it's exciting to be where we are. I can't think of one place in the city in 2023 that will not have some growth of some sort, and so it's exciting to see where we're going to be, what we're going to be doing, and how that's going to happen. The Lookout Point Park is going to be, I believe, opened on May, the first part of May, which we're just waiting to be able to lay sod down and for the community to be able to enjoy that park in our downtown area. We're just, we've got so many things happening. Pocatello is in a great position as we enter into 2023, and I'm very excited to see what we do and see how Pocatello grows as a community as we work together. I want to thank, and it's words, it's not near enough, but I have to thank our employees for all that they do every day. They come in, they work hard, they give us 100% every day, and I just want them to know how much I personally appreciate them and how much the council appreciates them as well. They've done a lot of work, they do a lot of things, and it's amazing to see everything that's accomplished. You know, you go through the year, you don't realize that. That was 32 minutes of nothing but accomplishments throughout the year, and believe it or not, I went through the State of the City address, and I cut things out because it was gonna be an hour and a half, two hours, and we weren't prepared for popcorn and soda for everybody that were watching it here in city council chambers. So, thank you so much for what you do and for your support and your involvement in our community. It's absolutely amazing. Oh, one last thing, our community partners, we cannot do what we accomplish without those community partners, and I can't thank them enough. I'm not going to name them by names because I'll forget somebody probably, but you heard a number of them during the State of the City address. We literally cannot accomplish all the goals without those community partners, and so I just want a heartfelt thank you to them and for all that they do. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for participating in our community, and with that, we are adjourned.